This conference will now be recorded.
Before we get rolling, are there any Christmas light winners here?
I'm gonna take that as a no.
Number one is Third Wardville. I think they should be recognized.
They also come in late, we'll see if we can get them recognized. All right, let's do this. We'll call the meeting of the Sedalia City Council, the order. First, we're gonna start off with prayer and pledge allegiance. Councilman Robinson is going to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we ask your guidance in our decision. We ask your forgiveness when we fail to follow your path. We ask your blessing and protection for our police and firemen. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and peace and justice for all.
Rule call please.
Robinson here. Oldham here. Marshall here. Bogus absent. Hiller here. Cross here. Foster.
Here.
Bliss here.
Okay, first item on our agenda was the Christmas light contest winners. They're gonna move on to the next item. We have service awards. We have one here for Heather Bridges for five years of service. Thank you.
Heather's been with the city for five years. She started out in the finance department and then with about a year and a half ago, almost two years, decided to join me in the HR department. She has been a great asset, not only to the city but the department as well. I truly believe that the reason why we've made so many strides as we have in the HR department is due to her, her thoughtfulness, thinking outside of the box, and her dedication and loyalty to the city. So Heather, I thank you and I look forward to hopefully five, 10, 15, maybe 20 more years of working together.
Okay, the next item we have is a retirement award and this is for 25 years and three months. This is for Mr. Kenneth Ozlau, you're working for the street department. So if I can come on up, Kenneth?
That's a long year since. That is a long year. You got a little retirement gift for you too?
A little. Well, I'd like to thank you all for this great gift. Thanks for letting me stay around for 25 years. And hopefully I leave up the city better than I found it. 25 years of doing this, that and the other, about to last fill, running my streets, Looper. So hopefully I set a standard, the next guy lying behind me keeps it up. Thank you all very much. What are you gonna do now?
That sounds like a good plan. Okay, next time we have on our agenda is approval of the previous session minutes. It is from council meeting dated December 19th, 2022. Do I have a motion in second?
Motion approved.
So you get. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the rule call of our standing committees. Up first is Finance Administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
I have two items on my report tonight. First is the annual report from Scott Joplin International Ragtime Foundation. And Mr. John Simmons will give us the presentation.
Quicker, it's right there, John.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall, and thank you, Kelvin. I have with me tonight Doug Freed. He's the acting and serving president of the foundation this year. And Doug will say a few words at the end also. But want to give you a review of what the city provides and what the foundation provides in return to the city and the area. For our new people, the board members, of course Doug is the president this year. Dr. Becky Mhauser is also on the board with Catherine Menifee, Nancy Moss, Chris Robinson. Anthony Wilson's a good new addition to the board, Bob Walters, Evelyn Porter. Ryan Wright is our artistic director and he's from the East Coast and he puts together the list of performers for each festival. Scott Miller is a new addition to the board from Sedalia, myself, Kathleen Boswell, Kyle Herrick, Deb Bierman. And Bill Edwards is the symposia director. The symposia is that part of the festival during the day where people come in and learn about ragtime. They go do an in-depth study on a certain style of ragtime or a certain composer or a certain ragtime era. So that's the educational piece of it. And then Bill McNally is also on the board as the Ragtime Kids Director. That's a new program where we recognize up and coming youngsters into the world of ragtime that are making significant strides either in their piano playing or composition. The mission of the foundation is to preserve and promote an understanding and appreciation of ragtime music and its history worldwide and to further promote the contribution to ragtime music and the importance of Sedalia, Missouri to that history. The core of the foundation is the production of the annual ragtime festival. That's what we're all familiar with, but they do work throughout the year. And this has been going on for over 66 years. But with the annual festival, that's a later addition. I'm gonna say Doug, how many years, probably in the late... The annual festival? Forty, yeah, 46. Previous to that, they were sporadic. It was just a once in a decade and now it's an annual thing. It's the largest festival of its kind. And it's beloved because for those people that perform and come to our festival from out of town, it's their family reunion. Ragtime is a way of life for many of these people and you'll see that later in the presentation. Ticketed concerts and free venues, tea dances, dance lessons, the symposia, and music swap meets fill the festival base. The objective is to manage the business according to generally accepted guidelines for nonprofit organizations. The policies reflect current practices and are implemented with accountability. We have a strong core of board members and believe me, each month when we meet and sit down at the board meeting, we're going over the business of the foundation. Orientation and training programs instill a sense of ownership with the board of directors so we understand the big picture. And volunteer leaders fulfill assigned liaison positions working under approved guidelines. So everybody on this board of directors has a specific duty during that festival or throughout the year and we hold each other accountable. Are we making our goals? Are we meeting what we said we were going to do? So in 2022, if you'll remember, that was the first time we came back together since our wonderful enemy COVID. There were four days with 23-plus musicians. We had two open air venues. You saw the introduction of the Farnell Pavilion. The Katie Depot is also a free venue. There were seven concerts at Liberty Center, nine symposia sessions, interaction with the musicians, which is key. That's one of the really good things about this festival is that this gives the public access to talk to and have an experience with those performers that we bring in. A lot of these other ragtime festivals, they're up on the stage, off they go. They perform and they're gone. Here, we really get to interact and of course, the ragtime reunion. When we look at the impact on Sedalia in 2022, again, it's the longest-standing ragtime festival in the U.S. We had 26 states and four foreign countries, 633 concert tickets sold. And the reason I put 1171 in 2019, that was the last time we had a festival, was 2019. We were very concerned going into this year's festival that numbers were gonna be down. We knew they were gonna be down. They were down a bit more than we thought they were gonna be. We thought we were gonna lose 20, 25%, but we came close to losing 50% of our audience. And if you'll recall, when the world was reopening, as we were leading in this festival, there was a lot of trepidation from our visitors, the people that contact the festival and who we outreach to, that did not come. They just flat out were not ready to come back to the world as we knew it. So overnight visitors, we extrapolated the numbers based on the concert tickets sold over the three days. And we estimated that accommodations, there was 45,900 locally spent. Daytime tourism expenditures on food included our visitors from Sedalia that bought food or did something centered around that festival, some kind of financial impact at 18,650. And then the event revenue itself brought in 33,508. Total direct economic impact, $98,000. That's down from previous years. And I keep saying it's down from previous years because it's very important to understand. We understand as a foundation that we've got to rebuild this festival coming out of pandemic and your participation is key to that. So these were the 26 states that we saw our visitors come from, all across the board. We jumped across the middle western U.S. We're not connected there, but I would suspect we had Colorado somewhere in there, but they didn't show up on our ticket sales. So back to that 2021 period, the festivals were canceled. We didn't have any contract penalties. We were able to cancel those festivals without being on the hook for dollars for tent rentals or performers. And during that time, they created that Syncupated Saturday Night. That's a Facebook event where once a month, we were producing various recordings. We would have pianists in a certain state or city record a 30-minute segment of their performance and then we would broadcast it to the world. That raised $29,715 in donations directly to the foundation and every penny of that went to those musicians that contributed to the series. It was really important to the foundation, not just locally to keep this thing moving, but those performers that did not have venues or ways to raise money were out there getting paid for some sort of performance. That was important to the foundation. Big thing that we got out of it, it increased the awareness of the Ragtime Foundation. We're seeing new people coming in based on their exposure through Facebook to this event. And those donors came from 37 states or close to $30,000 and foreign countries included Canada, England, Japan, and Spain. I suspect Brazil was in there also because the people that came in 2019 from Brazil are planning to come back to this year's festival also. So your city participation was 10,000 in 2022. We did not need that money in '20 or '21 due to the cancellations. That $10,000 sponsors the free venues, the performer fees, the infrastructure of the festival, equipment for local and general public enjoyment. Staff, city staff assists with venue construction and building up the infrastructure of the festival, helping that get put together. Public Works cleans up the streets and removes trash prior to and during the event. And then the city website provides recognition of that event to our base here at the city. The business community contributes over 10,000 in products, services, and sponsorships. This year, the Missouri Arts Council is providing an increase to 10,729. It typically been around $8,600 a year. The Tourism Marketing Grant is also an increased amount of support. And then our local clubs and organizations are also pushing that event. So the vision for the future for the foundation is to continue attending numbers back to pre-COVID levels, get better use of the new venue, the Farnell Pavilion. We introduced it at the last festival. We learned some things about that first time and how to better utilize it. Continue Syncupated Saturday Nights in late February, early March. We're going to Facebook the performances from last year's festival and push that awareness again of the foundation out to that community and the fact that we're gonna have another one in June. Educate our younger generations and increase the awareness of Sedalia's location and importance to the American music scene. With that, we'll have any questions? But I'd like to bring Doug up here just to say a few words that he and I spoke about today and he had some good insight also.
I'd just like to address the council and tell all of you how much the foundation, is appreciative of all that you do for the festival. Not only just monetarily, but also the personnel that you give us to the festival. That is wonderful. So I'm gonna read my notes here. Personnel that is loaned to the festival by the city is most helpful. They set up, they do all kinds of things. They set up chairs, they move the tables. Also, they do the cleaning of the streets and that's a big deal. Painting all the street markings and curves, helping with the volunteer support. Most of all, we appreciate all of the hands-on deck attitude of the city. I mean, we really appreciate that because all those people are out there working for us and helping us and that's so important. And most of all, the investment that in the infrastructure of the downtown the city has done over the last many years. Plus the organizations involved, the CBCD, Tourism Commission, Liberty Center, Katie Depot, Missouri Arts Council, and the Farnell Company to make the festival possible. The new pavilion is a wonderful addition to the festival. The audience loved it and the artists loved it. It was incredibly successful. And I invite you all to come to the festival and really experience it and enjoy it because it's wonderful. We knew that our numbers would be down. People were leery of travel still, as John said. But hopefully after last year and after the Syncupated Saturday Night that we're doing, you know, they'll be back with us next year. So that'll be great. And John, I just want to thank you for all that you do and I appreciate this wonderful convention. Anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you, Doug. So you guys are gonna continue the Syncupated Saturday Nights?
We are. We're gonna do February, March, and April is kind of what we're thinking about. We're kind of, we decided not to do it in the fall. But that will keep it in front of our audience, which is pretty much worldwide, as you can see, you know, and a lot of people. And the one thing that Saturday Night Live did, not Saturday Night, Syncupated Saturday Night, it's our Saturday Night Live, right? But anyway, the thing that it did is it really built a potential donor list. Because a lot of those people that donate and have never been to Sedalia, never been to the festival, but it gives us a whole new, you know, tremendous number of people from various places in the United States, like John said, what was it, 26 states? And how many foreign countries? Do you remember that?
No, there were four foreign countries, 32 Syncupated Saturday Nights.
So we hope bigger and better as we move forward with this.
Hey, what dates are coming up? You mentioned February, March. Which Saturday night, February, which Saturday night in March?
They haven't picked the night yet.
Okay.
But the Artists in Preston, that's where we have the Ragtime Artists, come to Sedalia for a week and cater our schoolchildren. It is the first week of February that will be here, so that's a big outreach also. That helps with the local crowd to throw up with ragtime and understand why it's here.
I think that's great too, that you guys are building awareness through that outreach.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second item I have is a call for ordinance to accept a safekeeping agreement from Central Trust Bank. This agreement is to engage their services for city investments. This account is an alternate investment option with the primary intent of purchasing U.S. government treasuries with options to purchase brokered certificates of deposit. This agreement also allows for online access to the account.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance, if I may? I read the document in the background and Exhibit A said they waive all their fees for the service. Would you explain that to me a little bit, Kelvin? Just because we're so wonderful or is that a standard practice or?
Yeah, yeah, we just, nice guy, just. It's because Central Bank is our primary depository, so we have a lot of funds at the bank and so they have offered this account to us or the safety arrangement to us. That's no additional call.
Okay, and so it's, Central Bank, it said Jefferson City on the back of documents, but it's our central, okay, that's.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I get it. It's their.
They're all combined together now, but it, this service will come out of the Jeff City office. Is it Jeff City or Clump? I can't remember where he comes from, but anyway, he's.
It was Jeff City on the agreement.
Okay, and basically all of these transactions will really be over the phone and online. So, but then we'll have online access. We'll be able to see it all, get all the reports online, and then move money around really seamlessly from our general banking accounts to the safekeeping.
So this is an annual renewal, this is a renewal in the agreement?
This is new. This is a new arrangement with them. We have a safekeeping arrangement with E-Connect, what is, what's the name of that company? Yeah, MBS Securities that Council has approved in the past. We've had it for quite some time since I was in finance anyway. We have that arrangement and that's where we've been doing the majority of our brokered CDs is through that arrangement or actually all of them now. And this though will allow us the opportunity to use directly with Central Bank and then we can go, we anticipate we'll buy T-bills, government-backed securities and those kinds of things. It'll help them as well because then they won't have to hold as much collateral as they do currently. So we can go directly to government-backed security, get a little bit better interest rate, they won't have to hold as much collateral, pledge collateral for it.
Okay, thank you. I missed anything? Any other council discussion? Cause will read the order.
Bill number 2023-1. An ordinance approving and accepting a safekeeping agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Central Trust Bank.
Second reading.
All in favor? All opposed?
Bill number 2023-1. An ordinance approving and accepting a safekeeping agreement binding between the city of Sedalia, Missouri and Central Trust Bank.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Chairman, public safety, the Sydney has a presentation on, by Animal Services Director, Randy Vassen, who does a super job protecting children.
I'm Randy Vassen. I'm gonna talk to you about what we've done at the animal shelter over the last year and what our goals are for next year. So to tell you a little about the animal shelter, in case you haven't made a trip out there to check out our shelter yet. On the dog side of the shelter, the canine side, we have 49 dog kennels. There's six in the quarantine room, 10 in the holding room, 27 in adoption. We have six in an indoor-outdoor section. And then we also have what we refer to as the wiggle room, which is an outdoor play area. There are three pens that are fenced in that we can open up into each other if we want to and we have utilized that to get the dogs exercise and to get them social skills, learning how to play with each other and be a dog. This has really, really increased our adoption rates since installing that. On the cat side, the feeling side, we have 97 cat kennels total, 28 in quarantine, 28 in holding, 28 in the exam room, and 12 in adoption. We do not utilize all of those at the same time. Several years ago, I came to council and asked for something that's referred to in the cat world as a portal because the lack of space that these cats had in the small kennels was causing the cats to get sick and get upper respiratory infections, which was drastically slowing down the adoption process. So we installed these portals and now we use basically half of what is listed there. We use it all, but it's two kennels per one cat, which has really increased our adoption rates. As far as the staff, aside from myself, we have a full-time shelter attendant, Amy Close. We have the full-time shelter attendant, Jennifer Allman. The animal control officer, Troy Snyder, and the other animal control officer, as well as shelter attendant, Madison Jeffries. Madison is a new addition for us this year and Jennifer has been brought back into our staff this year. We are open 12 to 5, Monday through Saturday, but we're there every day of the week, every day of the year. Employees get there between 7:30 and 8:00 a.m. every morning and that's when they begin their duties. We start taking care of the animals, giving medications, cleaning, feeding, and with the amount of animals that we have on hand on average, that takes us until about noon every day. Animal Control operates a minimum of 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., six days a week, but we are on call for emergencies at all times. So I always try and give you our statistics of what we've accomplished this year and compare it to the year prior to that. It's my goal every year to increase our adoptions, increase our return to owners as long as our intake numbers are increased as well. Ultimately, my goal would be that our intake numbers are very low because we do not have very many strays. So here are the statistics for 2021 versus 2022. You can see that in 2021, we adopted out 682 animals versus this last year, we did 589. In 2021, we returned 277 animals to their owners and this year, 224. We transferred, which means we've transferred them to another rescue where they have a better shot of adoption. Lots of times if we get in an older animal, there's specific rescues out there that are for senior animals and they already have that following of people who are seeking out that senior animal. So we will transfer them to another rescue with hopes that they have a better chance of getting adopted through them. So we did 2021 last year and 22 this year. Last year, we euthanized 30 animals and this year, we euthanized 31. In total, we took in 1,011 animals in 2021 versus 914 animals this year. So as I said, you know, the ultimate goal is that our intake numbers are going down, but I don't believe that I can look at you and say our intake numbers went down because we don't have as many strays this year. Our intake numbers went down this year because we shut down to redo our floors and that took quite a while. We had to empty out the shelter for a while, only take in emergencies in order to get the area ready for them to be able to do two rooms at once and then flip and go do the other two rooms at once. We also were hit with parvo and we do shut down the shelter for intakes when we get parvo because I do believe that a stray, non-aggressive animal is safer outside of the shelter than it is to bring it in and condemn it to death by parvo. So I greatly want our numbers, our intake numbers to be coming down, but I want them to be coming down because of fewer strays, not just because we shut down for a couple weeks. So our 2022 goals that council decided on was, or approved, was that we would improve the walking trail. This year, the walking trail has been improved, not to the extent that I was hoping for, but it has been improved. The Parks Department took over the mowing and it is beautifully mowed at this point and very usable again. With the theory that it was going to be prairie grass, the grass got really out of control. The rodents got really out of control. The snakes got a little bit out of control and people started using the trail less and less frequently. So now that we have. So now that we have gotten the mowing back under control, and it is looking very pretty again, people have returned to use the trail, walk the shelter dogs, and a couple of people are even walking their own pets. The gazebo and landscaping that I had hoped to add this year have not been added, we are partnering with the Parks Department in this area, and as you guys know, the Parks Department has had an extremely busy and successful year with the Hecker Building, so we have a solid plan for where to start next year. The other goal is to promote good pet practices, and we were doing that by educating people as they came in to pick up their animals, making Facebook posts on what people could do to be better pet owners, more responsible pet owners, we handed out flyers to people coming to get their pets, there were informational flyers, letting them know what ordinances we have here in Soudae regarding their pets, and although our numbers are slightly down, they're not where I want them to be, so we will continue this, I think it is helpful, but we will increase our social media posts on pet ownership as well. Then the electric, electronic citations, that has been a lengthy process, and I had to do a lot of creating for what fit our needs, we should be up and running in the next two or three weeks, possibly not our mobile electric citations, but at least our desktop citations. So you can see on the right-hand side what the statistics were for 2020, 2021, and 2022, as far as what my concerns were that I brought to you last year, about the number of widows being born in town, unwanted widows being born in town, animals being found running at large, and the bike quarantines. In 2020, there was seventy puppies, a hundred and thirty-seven in 2021, and down, but not by much, this year, and a hundred and twenty-six. Five hundred and forty-nine running at large animals in 2020, seven hundred and six in 2021, and six hundred and thirty-five in 2022. Bike quarantines went up drastically in 2021, with thirty-one versus the eighth the year before, but they are down to seventeen this year. And that's not to say we're not having as many dogs fighting, which I truly hope that we don't, but if animals are current on their rabies vaccine, then they do not have to be quarantined within the shelter, they can be quarantined within their own home. So that means bare minimum, we have more pet owners out there that are getting their rabies vaccine. So the goals that we've set for 2023 is to get more specific and detailed on the walking trail, it is our goal that this walking trail be a nature setting for you to take your pet or come and volunteer to walk a shelter pet, and enjoy a bit of quiet within the city limits. So the three goals that we've set for this is to landscape the entrance of the trail, of course, with the Parks Department's help, add memorial benches along the trail, and we'll be placing trail markers with wastebag stands, because those will be necessary as people start utilizing the trail more. We do hope that the dog park is coming soon, I spoke with Amy with the Parks Department regarding this, and she believes it'll be late fall 2023 or 2024, depending on her grant application that she has submitted. Another goal for this year is that we would like to update our van, I came to you two years ago about a new vehicle for the shelter, all of our vehicles have been extremely rundown, and you guys approved the purchase of a truck, which has been phenomenal, but we do still utilize two vehicles, sometimes I have two animal control officers out at once, sometimes I have an animal control officer out in the field, while I have a shelter attendant running all of the rest of our animals to the stand-nuther clinic. So being able to utilize two vehicles is still extremely important for us, but our vehicle is needing a little boost. So in order to utilize the assets that we already have, I'm hoping to put a full wrap on the van that we have, it'll require a little bit of bodywork along the bottom side where there's rust, functionally, the van still runs very well, and then switch out some new headlights and completely improve the old van to make it last many more years for us. Another goal for 2023 is three Visor City animal ordinances. We started to address this this year alongside with the promoting better pet ownership, we did get one new ordinance passed towards the end of last year, and I believe it'll be extremely helpful, but when we began to look at that ordinance with the help of lawyers, we found that a lot of our ordinances are a bit redundant, they go, they repeat themselves, some of them are too loosely worded, and all in all, I think that we could go through and here, organize what we have, eliminate what we don't need, and create what will do a better job of protecting citizens from unruly pets, and protecting pets from unruly So those are the goals that we've set for 2023. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you Chairman Robinson. Up next, we have Public Works, Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
First item I have tonight is continuing on with the strategic planning presentation is our Parks Recreation Director, Amy Effley.
All right, thank you guys. You'll hear some of the same things that Randy was talking about, her and I've met, we've been trying to get a game plan in place, we'll talk a little bit about that. For those that are new to Council, I'd just like to talk about the Parks Department and what our purpose is as a department, it is our mission to provide programs, facilities, and services that'll enhance the quality of life of the Soudae citizens and those who travel and visit here as well. Before we kind of start talking about what our goals are for next year, I just wanted to hit about ten achievements in 2022 that staff is proud of. The opening of the Hecker Community Center, normally we'll do like twenty-two goals, or twenty-three goals, depending on the year, but the Hecker really could have covered all twenty-two goals this year in different areas and parts, so we hit that as just one, and we just, it was hard for us to kind of get down to, we said twenty-two, and then I said we need to stick with ten, because we, I think you hit about a hundred and ten as a staff. So opening the Hecker Community Center has been fabulous, I've seen all of your faces in there, Steve Bliss, I think needs a change of address to eighteen-hundred West Street Street, that or there's like five of them, because anytime I walk out of that, they'll be nice to him. But for those that come through any time of the day, you can see what it impacts the Hecker Community Center has, so it's hard to talk about how much it's done, but I can just tell you, if you've gone through, you know that, you see it, the faces and the memories, and just, I get a story every single day about the impact it has had, there was a lady walking upstairs, holding the door for her, I said, you know, thanks for coming, she goes, no, thank you for having us, and she's like, I have definitely got at least ten more years in love my life because of this facility, so it's good to hear those stories. We have a little over four thousand members at the Hecker Community Center, which our goal is around thirty-five hundred, so we're doing well in the memberships there. Opening up the Hubbard Splash Pad, if you haven't been over there, I highly suggest going over there next, next year when it opens, we'll open by Memorial Day, if not sooner, depending on the weather, this year, we were able to keep it open until mid-October, which is nice when you close out, so that you have that free space to go out at any time to use. Expansion of Liberty Lights, hopefully all of you drove through Liberty Lights, and you kind of can see the expansion, we'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to do next year. With that expansion came the electrical improvements through Liberty Park, which will help us to be able to continue to grow. Art in the Park, we'll continue to do that, you'll see some art in the park at Hubbard Park going in here in April, and that'll be something we just continue to do, we work with other parks departments in the state of Missouri, where we will swap out and we switch with them, so it doesn't cost us as much, and it kind of rotates art throughout Kansas, Missouri, and Illinois. Repairing to Liberty Park Bridge, if you've gone over there, you'll see the repairs, and it looks so much nicer. We added over twenty new programs, landscaping, planted over a hundred trees and one thousand tulips, and then there was a lot of field improvements over at Centennial Park. So our strategic plan for 2023-24 is to work on doing an RFQ for the outdoor aquatic facility, this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone, we've really talked about this a lot to the public and to Council and Park Board, that our outdoor pools are aging and are kind of hitting the life, and we're doing the best that we can to keep them, but it is time to kind of start preparing and designing and kind of looking at where we need to be with the outdoor aquatic facility. The new train engine, that is something that we are going to be moving forward with, hopefully approving, Park Board is on board with it, if we're doing well finance, it might be something we do this year, still in the fiscal year, but we do need a new train, because the one that we had did not pass inspection, and we spent all that money on a train house, it worked for a year, and it just hasn't, for the safety, so we're going to have to buy a new engine, but all the carts are still fine, we can use those. Expansion of Liberty Lights, phase four, the lights now, next year, will go down Liberty Park Stadium, and it'll go down the pool and hit Danville Field and Liberty Stadium, so then hopefully the lights will continue to go through and turn there, so that's going to be phase four. We're really trying to gear up right now, staff is working on doing a lot of data and everything, but to start corporate memberships at the Hecker Community Center, we have a lot of businesses in town that are interested in being able to provide their staff memberships, we do that currently with city employees, but just make sure that we're doing the right thing and make sure that we are covering ourselves financially, because that is what pays to operate the facility, so that is something that we hope to be pushing in the next fiscal year as well. Liberty Playground completion, that will be, it'll start in the fiscal year, but it'll finish in the next fiscal year, adding tournaments and programs, and then I'm going to talk about a little different, you know, we applied for that grant for Liberty Stadium, and we'll find out in the end of January if we get that, so that's going to determine a lot of where we go strategically, so if we're going to go Plan A with, we got the grant, which is awesome, now let's do these big improvements at Liberty Stadium, or if we don't get the grant, then we have Plan B, because without that grant, we can't do all the things that we need to do at Liberty Stadium, so I'll be talking about two different plans that we'll be doing for that. Really kicking off sponsorship, you know, the first year, getting our feet wet, learning and growing with the opening of the Hecker Community Center, but now that we've been open almost a year, now let's try to like target more, more sponsorship. Bopple just had a night at the Hecker Community Center, which was great, they sponsored it, and people could come from six p.m. to nine p.m., it's free, they had doctors there, it was great for the community, and we'd like to see more of those, and we've already been reaching and talking to some sponsors that would like to do that there, new sponsored swim, they would like to do something during the winter months as well at the Hecker, so that's something, I like to make sure if we do it, we do it right, and we just were spread too thin, that we just couldn't take on too much more, so we kind of, but that is something to decide, we'll do it, but let's wait until we have all our ducks in the road to do it correctly, so that is something that we'll be kicking off for some sponsorship events. And then improvements to Convention Hall, I get that a lot, is what's going on at Convention Hall, it's busy, if a child or grandchild or neighbor plays football, it kind of takes over January and February at Convention Hall, which is great, it's one thing I can see down the road, it's continuing to grow, and we do have that as something down the road of indoor soccer, but to see that and how many people it brings in over at Convention Hall, our dance and gymnastics have doubled in numbers, so Convention Hall is well-used, and, but it's starting to see that it's been well-used a lot, where we didn't have a lot of time to stop and do repairs and paint and just little things that we need to do, so it's not big improvements, but there's small little things that'll make a big change, floor and carpet and just paint, so that's something that next fall, during the months that it starts to get cold, staff maintenance will be going in there and working on some improvements that we have. So we talked about Liberty Park Stadium, and if we, you know, John worked really hard, I helped him just a little bit, I can't take too much credit, John really did the bulk of the work for the grant, but if we do just get this grant, it's going to be a huge benefit to the park system, to local businesses, the amount of tournaments that we can do will be fabulous, we'll be able to replace the grass with toast, we'll be able to take the restrooms and do heating and cooling in there, state there, they start playing their first game February fourth, but we have to do porta-potties, because that is an old facility, we do not winterize it, because if we open it up early, we say April first when we open it, sometimes we'll give in, and we open up March twenty-second, and then what happens, the pipes freeze, so that's one thing that we would love to see done, talking with Bryn Dunn and some others, paving the parking lot, improving some drainage there on Third Street, and then improvements to the fan stand and seating, dugout, locker room, right now, they don't even use the locker room, if you went over there, it's more storage, those would need to be upgraded as well, and then adding a pitch count to the scoreboard. I'm hopeful and excited to hopefully get this grant, but we all know how grants work, if we don't get it, our option B would be the dog park, so hopefully Randy is not hoping they don't get the grant, because the dog parks will come the next year, I promise. But if we don't get the grant, what we would use is, I'm working on a dog park, again, it's that three-section dog park, it would be for small dogs, large dogs, and then shelter dogs, which is something different, it would be behind the animal shelter, we would be adding a parking lot, and then long-term, adding a restroom over there as well. And then we will look at doing some light improvements at Cloverdale Park, these are all in our master plan, but we update our master plan every year, you know, the Hecker Community Center was something that came a little sooner than what, when we originally did the master plan, so that kind of changed things up a lot, it was a great thing to happen early, but each year, we'll update it, and so again, that dog park's one that if we get the grant, it will be pushed to next fiscal year, but if we don't get the grant, then that'll be something that happens this next fiscal year. New programs that we'll be bringing, we're going to be looking at doing a family campout out at Cloverdale, adding more family fitness classes, adding Special Olympics, pickleball tournaments, we're working right now with Columbia, Jeff City, and some others too, the show-me games, we're kind of running out of space in Columbia, so I've been going to some meetings, and maybe starting to maybe move some events over here, when it be at the big summer events, but they do do winter and spring, of working with them to that. And then we recently talked to a company that does aquatic bounce houses, and so we're going to do an Olympic bounce house in the Hecker next November and December, which would just be something fun with that great, large facility, we could be able to do that, so it'll be a nice Friday, Saturday, just to change things up and add it. And then I'd just like to always hit our three-year goals, you know, opening of a new aquatic facility, the completion of the dog park of all phases, parking and drainage at Liberty Park, a new playground at Katy and Vermont, lights replaced at soccer field, soccer field improvements, and then restrooms at Cloverdale down by the lake, and then in five years, it's hopefully a new splash, a second splash pad, which we already had the design and everything for that, when we did the first one, it cost us, I think, a thousand dollars to get the design done, so we went ahead and did those two designs at the same time, adding the same volleyball courts out there at Cloverdale, upgrading and improving the LED lights throughout the park, more parking at Hazel, a new maintenance shop, we're going to need another maintenance shop, and we know that, and that's in the master plan for five years, improvements at Hubbard Park, and then doing the study of the ten-minute walk to park. My first strategic plan, that was one thing that I really stressed, that my long-term goal is really to make sure that there's a park that everyone in this community could have, could walk to within ten minutes, so let's, you know, work on that study again and update that, and see where we're at. So that's the strategic plan for the park system, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Steve?
I saw your hat, you're kind of...
Sitting here quiet.
I was just worried about you there. Okay, thank you guys, as always, my door is always open, so if you guys have any questions, let me know, thanks.
Next item I have tonight is the wastewater strategic plan with Bryn Arby.
I want to know who set the schedule that wastewater comes behind the animals and behind the park system, the poo person should not come right behind that, because mine is not as exciting as theirs.
Unfortunately, yours is fine, next year, when it gets done, it's all underground. So for twenty-four, going into wastewater, we will process, actually, as of December thirty-first, we have processed one point seven billion gallons of wastewater at our three wastewater plants, and the reason that number is always so high is we do continue to process stormwater that comes in through I and I, or flow and infiltration in the system, it is an old system, and we expect that, but we do keep working on it, we maintain the three wastewater treatment plants, the compost facility, a hundred and eighty-seven miles of sewer collection pipe, over twenty-two hundred manholes, and seventeen lift stations. As of last month, we have over ten... As of last month, we have over 10,650 connections into the system. The pre-treatment program, working with industrial and businesses. We do permit seven industries. We inspect 79 restaurants, 60 automotive shops, eight car washes, 16 dental offices, and 31 city facilities, at least annually, and some of them get inspected quarterly under the law. We do comply with state and federal National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, NIPD's permit requirements on the three plants. That also covers the stormwater requirements, the MS4 requirements, which do require us to review all civil engineering plans and to inspect all the basins or structures that are put into place for stormwater throughout the year. We have had a personnel shortage in wastewater. It is slightly better than it was, but we do continue to have a higher vacancy rate in wastewater. Water pollution control, what have we accomplished this year? We continue to work towards re-permitting our three plants. The majority of what is left is a study that is being done related to water effects ratio. What effect is the hard water that we're using have on the affluent that we treated the plants? And a metals translator study. It's basically over the low limits for heavy metals that we have through our DNR permitting. And it's hopeful that we can improve those limits based on the hard water results. At Central Plant this year, we have replaced three secondary lift station pumps and the variable frequency drives that operate those. We've replaced two secondary scum pumps, a return activated sledge pump. We've replaced the sledge pump in the basement. We've rehabilitated the sledge belt filter press, which, that is a picture of the press in operation. Let's see, we have replaced one grid chamber blower motor. We've replaced one aeration blower and the gearbox that operates the skimmer on the primary clarifier. And we have completed the engineering for the Central Plant upgrade. That list and just routine maintenance has cost the city in excess of $500,000 this year. At the Southeast Wastewater Treatment Plant, we've replaced two influent pumps, two mixers, and a sledge pump. At the North Plant, and with the North Plant, I always want everyone to remember that that's the trickling filter plant. It's aged. We're keeping it in place and replacing what we need to remain in compliance without building on the plant. Okay? So we've replaced one cascade pump, a sledge pump, and two gear motors, as well as a small sump pump and a Sensifone dialer. For replacing those, we spent in excess of $100,000 this year. Tree management, we have done root control through dukes. And they go into lines that have historically had problems with roots. And we put a chemical through it and then our back truck goes back and augers out the roots. So we clean pipes and that project is complete for the year. The tree grinding at the compost site is complete for the year. We've replaced the Menards and the Thompson Meadows Lift Stations. Both of those lift stations are online and operating. We have rehabilitated the Main Street Lift Station, the one right at the entrance to the Central Plant. And the master plan is now complete. The big news on stormwater is we did receive the ARPA grant funds. We will have about a $5 million project kicking off next year. But like many projects, we'll have three years to complete that. So there is a lot of engineering, well, not on that project. There's a lot of construction on that project. The extent of the project is basically 16th Street from Sneed all the way to Lamine. Anything where you've seen water standing along that roadway, this stormwater project will get those fixed. On Third Street, next to Liberty Park, on Ninth Street, at 12th and Center, and in several other areas of the community. So, let's see, Central Plant. This is for 2024, the capital budget request that we'll be talking about at the strategic planning session. For next year, at Southeast, we're looking to replace an influent pump and to rehabilitate the skimmer process. And basically that's to correct an engineering flaw in the gear assemblies and replace the roll type door at the sledge room. Those are all considered compliance issues. So at the Central Plant, we'll replace the other sledge pump and we'll purchase an extra motor. We can rebuild motors without replacing pumps. If we keep one sitting on the shelf, then we'll never have a pump down for any period of time. We'll replace the other re-activated sledge pump and replace a 50 horsepower mixer in the bio basin. But we're hoping that the plant upgrade, we'll be able to use a different method and we won't have to replace that. At the North Wastewater Treatment Plant, again, we're trying to remain in compliance, excuse me. But at the same time, we will have to keep replacing some mechanical equipment through, I want to say, at least two and a half more years until that plant comes online. So we'll replace two submersible pumps, those are small pumps. And we will need to dredge a portion of the equalization basin. And that basin is about 10 and a half acres. The compost facility, annually, we replace one comp dog and we rebuild one comp dog. On the collection system side, we've got the Prairie Hollow Sewer Main Extension Project. That's an ARPA project. We've got the near-central regional lift station under the UP rail, which will go near the wire co-plant and allow sewer access to homes on the north side of the Union Pacific Rail for the first time. We've got the South Limit Avenue from the west side of Limit to the east side near 3615 South Limit. That will provide a sewer extension to the south for those wishing to connect. We've got the West Main Street from South Lamine to South Washington, replacement of 650 linear feet of pipe. We've got cast pipe running behind those businesses now that are failing. And we've got the State Fair Boulevard running west along Harold Avenue, about 1,000 linear feet. That is, we cannot repair through pipe bursting. The pipe has failed too much to do that. So on '24, also, we have lift station replacements needed. We'd have two pumps at the high school lift station. We have a pump at the Herd Street Lift Station. We have one lift station left without a generator and we're hoping, I'm on a list at Surplus Property to get a surplus military generator. And we've replaced, we need to replace one pump at the 32nd Street Lift Station and 150 horsepower pump at the 28th and New York Lift Station. And next year, Kieran Place Pipe, which will help with inflow and infiltration. We're asking for $140,000 worth of projects. And the map is a little hard to read, but it shows where those projects are at. And you'll see that the majority are in a single area and that's because we tried to do a sub-basin a year. And then we pick up emergencies, are the outliers, that you'll see. Equipment, we are trying to cost share the cost of new back truck between water and wastewater. Install cameras for safety and we are compliant for the wastewater plants and the lift stations. And we've got a 99 Chevrolet S10 and a 98 Ford Ranger that we'd like to replace. But we're hoping somebody else will buy new trucks and we'll be able to pick up their used ones instead of getting new ones for sewer. And we'd like to replace one camera crawler for the closed-circuit TV that we, camera lines. And that will be an eight-inch replacement. So for planning purposes, transition from Alliance Water Resources to a new operations contractor. Continue working on strategies to recruit licensed personnel and take a look at pay rates, although... She's gone. We have not seen that increasing pay rates will necessarily get wastewater operators. There is just a general shortage of licensed operators. And we need to figure out with DNR how we can get those people into the system. Coordinate working to complete DNR's process to permit the plants. And that's basically, our permit applications were timely submitted, but we did disagree about the copper limits at two of the plants and they agreed to allow us to do the studies. And those are just about complete. We continue to implement the master plan that was approved this year. We'll continue doing tree management, both the root control and the grinding. We'll implement the ARPA stormwater project, the year one. We'll continue working with the pump maintenance contractor. And we'll evaluate the power backup for that one lift station that doesn't have a generator. And we'll continue installing new manholes and grouting old ones to reduce infiltration. And we're trying to recruit volunteers to help on storm drain marking projects. The bad news for the year is that we have been advised by DNR that they would like us to enter into an abatement order on consent. Because our pumps were out and the sledge filter press had problems and we could not get parts as quickly during the COVID and after COVID because of the logistics and the lack of pumps and parts, we did exceed some limits, ammonia and copper. And they're wanting us to go under these abatement orders on consent and establish a schedule to have the work completed. And the main issue at Central is the aeration equipment, both the blowers and the oxygen diffusers. And it is a $3.2 million project. Phase two of the sledge filter press improvements will also improve oxygen depletion. And then to build the redundancy in sledge processing by purchasing an extra motor. So that's what I would expect to see in a schedule of compliance for that abatement order at Central Plant. And North Plant is interesting because we've had an ongoing discussion with them about copper and ammonia, again. And we do have the two studies underway. So we will continue working to keep up the mechanical equipment that is in place at the existing 1946 trickling filter plant to attain compliance and remain there as much as possible while completing those studies and continuing to sample industrial flow to determine if anyone has increased copper loading to the plant, which we have not found as of today. And we'll do partial dredging of the North Equalization Basin and continue working on replacing the North Plant. Any questions? That's a lot of material. That's why I hand these out. If you've got questions later, please let me know.
I have a question. The Alliance Water Resources said they're not going to manage the operations manager's contract anymore. Was there a reason for that?
I think they've got a staffing problem. Right now, they're supposed to have an A licensed operator on the site five days a week, 40 hours a week. And they've been averaging two days a week and by phone. And the last two gentlemen that they've had here have been less than successful working with our employees. So we have, we did bid and we do have a new company. They're young, they're energetic. We think they're a good fit for us and you'll be seeing something on that at the next meeting.
Thank you. I would just add to that, what they, what they told us was that it really doesn't fit their model of the way that they want to operate. They want to take, take over all of our staffing, you know, by chance, so to speak, at the, at the plant. And we were, we had always resisted that with them. We didn't, you know, because that, that puts you at essentially at their mercy, in my opinion, because you then can't have a hard time getting away from it. And so basically, they just told us that if we don't want to switch to the way they like doing things, then they wouldn't, wouldn't bid on the contract again. So that's what they did.
I would also add to Brenda's presentation, we do have a rate study going on. That we saw the preliminary numbers on that and they need to work through the details on it. But, you know, all of the things that Brenda talked about are, there's going to be some heavy dollars behind that. The preliminary numbers that we saw on the rate study is, you know, we are going to have to look at rate increases each year. But then we are going to continue with the process that we, as far as recommending to you all of doing a little each year or, you know, it'll have to be accelerated a little bit, but doing some each year as opposed to taking a big jump one year at a time. So that'll, that, just didn't want you to fall out of your chair when you start saying that.
Director Arby, what obstacles do you perceive there are to getting more wastewater operators certified?
I have talked to numerous communities in the state and out of state now. It's all the perception of you work in wastewater. And so is working in wastewater a career or a job? And a lot of it, that wastewater operations is the single most complex job in public works. Okay? Everybody needs to know that. It's a little bit of biology, a little bit of chemistry, knowing when you walk in that plant. Do you hear that motor and is it operating the way it should or that blower? There's a lot that goes into that. It's a truly skilled technical position. I think the wages are an issue, but unfortunately, when you look at it, everyone's in the same boat. You know, everyone's looking at having to replace, replace plants, replace infrastructure. There's big tickets tied to that and then trying to support adequate staffing. And in order to be an A licensed operator who can operate one of our plants, you have to have at least five and a half years of experience in a plant before you can be licensed as an A operator.
Is there any way to advocate for shortening that length of experience?
We're going to have to work through DNR and we're going to have to have other communities supporting that effort. And I don't think that'll be a problem at this point, from what I'm hearing. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Third item I have tonight is a budget amendment in agreement. The Public Works Department has put out a bid for two dry pit submersible pumps and four valve replacements at the Main Street Lift Station. And we received one bid from FTC Equipment for $52,446. This is a line item that is a little bit out of budget. So we need an ordinance to amend the budget and then an ordinance authorizing the agreement.
We have two ordinances in relation to this matter and further counsel discussion regarding it. Call for reading the first ordinance.
Bill number 2023-2, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 regarding WPC lift station pumps and valves.
Second reading.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed?
All opposed?
Bill number 2023-2. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2022-2023 regarding WPC Lift Station pumps and valves.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Call for reading the second ordinance.
Bill number 2023-3. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for replacement of dry pit submersible pumps and valves at the Main Street Lift Station.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2023-3. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for replacement of dry pit submersible pumps and valves at the Main Street Lift Station.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes. Fourth item I have tonight is an approval of the TAP grant, or the Transportation Alternative Programs Grant. This is a project that's been a pipeline for a little while now, and we are now at the point where we're going to take a bigger stride and make them safer pathways in our community. This creates a dedicated trail along Third Street connecting to Katy Depot to Liberty Park. This is a transportation, participation, this is a grant of participation of $500,000.
There were some council questions throughout today. If I could invite up Director Arbery to speak to those and kind of explain the Complete Streets program.
So the place I need to start is, this is a TAP grant, and MoDOT actually allows us to do this as both planning and construction. So, you know, the calls that I got today were asking, you know, I need an engineering plan, let me look at your engineering plan. We don't have one yet because it truly is presenting to MoDOT that we have a need, and if you go down Third Street and you look at the sidewalks, you'll see that they're in disrepair. There are no ADA compliant ramps going into that area, and that pretty well extends from where the depot has their brick sidewalk to the downtown area, and then picks up about, well, I get a call weekly from the Boon Slick librarian about the condition of her sidewalks. So Boon Slick all the way to Liberty Park. This is truly a project that allows the community to enjum Complete Streets. It's part of the comprehensive plan to build complete streets that provide safe walking, pedestrian mobility access for those that are in wheelchairs or other devices, and at the same time would allow for Katy Trail participation because part of John's comprehensive plan is to connect the Katy Trail to other trails and other venues. So this is actually the activity center's map, and that's as far as the actual structure of the trail through the planning activity has gone, is to show that it will go down Third Street from the depot to Liberty Park, and it'll start the engineering initiative as soon as the contract is awarded and signed by the city. And we will have public participation in the design and discussion. And part of what I know Kelvin and I have talked about and would like to see is that the light poles change and the electrical poles be removed, and we get underground utilities potentially along Third Street. So it gives us lots of ability to talk and discuss, and how can we make Third Street look better, but nothing has been designed yet. Okay? And as a result, we have through September of, let's see, we've got 23 months from the execution of the contract to begin construction. So they've given us plenty of time to work through both community activities and the actual engineering project and NEPO, which is the environmental piece of it. So that's kind of the starting point.
So that would be on the south side of the street?
Can't tell you that. We haven't designed it yet.
Well, you was talking about the library that was sidewalks all this way.
Right. So it's possible that part of it will be on the south side and part of it will be on the north side, and we have a cross somewhere within the boundary.
And it would be 10-foot wide, so would we have to purchase any property?
No, we have right-of-way that is sufficient to cover.
So would we have to take any of the street?
It's possible, but there was a streetcar that went through certain sections of this area, and the road is wider. There are sections of this that already have 10-foot wide sidewalks. It's just a matter of replacing them with improved concrete. I didn't flip. Can I flip this to you?
No, that's just a PDF.
Can you page up for me, Kelvin? And can you zoom in for me? There we go. And then if you'll scroll down a little more. These are the pictures that we provided to MoDOT, and you can see that, for example, this 400 block of East Third Street basically has no existing sidewalk. The ones that do have sidewalk are not ADA compliant, so that, you know, you don't want to hear your public works director tell you that we have an ADA compliance issue, but we have one on Third Street, and we need to get it corrected. And this grant allows us to get that corrected, and we're on a schedule that will allow for timely completion. So those are the areas, and there's another one where basically the sidewalk is gone, 500 block of West Third. The sidewalk is crumbling on the north side of Sacred Heart, and I've received calls from people that both attend the church and just walk through there about the condition of the sidewalk. There's the 500 block of West Third and 600 block. So there are definitely, you know, this gives us an opportunity to widen it, to make it safer for kids walking to and from Sacred Heart. It provides a safe trail from the Katy Depot and the Katy Trail to Liberty Park. Our next phase would complete the sidewalk that was started at the State Fairgrounds and comes to 50. So the next piece would be 50 back to Liberty Park, and you could loop and return to the Katy Trail there at the State Fairgrounds. So it creates a loop. But we don't have funding for that one piece, but we'll keep watching for it. So this is a starting block.
And we had a lot of the experience making the sidewalk into a trail because if you leave the depot and go east to engineer, that's what you're on. You're on the sidewalk where you utilize it.
Yeah, I'd like to add, Brenda, I drove, I drove down Third Street today. I got several calls from citizens thinking that we were going to take, put this down the way they thought they were going to take one, one half of the roadway without parking. I'll be very honest with you. My, my opinion is, I feel if this trail is built, it should all be on the north side because it won't affect, you know, I mean, there's 10-foot, basically from the corner or from the library heading east, the sidewalk is almost 10-foot all the way down through there, except where it needs to be replaced because there is no sidewalk. And that is a parking part of a parking lot that used to be Mike Gilson's repair shop. So I don't, I don't, you know, I, I just soon, if we, I'm just putting this out there, I just soon see that if we do this walkway, it all should be on one side or the other, not making the people cross back and forth, back and forth.
Well, I wouldn't see it as crossing back and forth, but there might be one place that you move the trail from the south to the north.
Well, I'm just saying that.
For example, Sacred Heart School is where I would say that you could not have it on the north side of the roadway because you would be, if you've ever gone by there during intake and outlet of the school, that sidewalk is packed with children. So you couldn't have, for example, bicycles traveling through that area.
Right.
So there's lots, there's lots of planning that needs to go on though.
Right, but I, you know, 90% of this trail, I think, should be on the left side or the, no, the south side, only because the access is already there. It's already, already on the ground, you know? It'd be turning out the old and putting in the new.
Right. This project would actually replace all the curb and gutter on wherever this sidewalk trail goes. So you might want to go back and check both ADA compliance at the corners and the condition of the curb along the roadway. We might want to go on a tour together. We can, we can go look at it, and we can talk. Okay?
I'd like to add something also, too. At our strategic planning last, last January, out of 25, this come in number 14. So this isn't something new that just come up?
No, it is not.
Right.
No. We, and we came and asked to apply for the money six months ago, six months or so ago, and everyone was on board with. You know, I get calls every day on sidewalks. Third Street is one of the sidewalks that we get the most calls about because it is traversed so much. You can argue for north side, south side. It's really, I think, getting in and looking. It may be that we make improvements to the sidewalk on both sides of the street just because we need ADA compliant sidewalks. So there's lots of reasons.
Are the sidewalks built to code by the Frenell Building?
Some of them are.
Because all that's new.
Right. 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 But bear in mind, we've got $1 million, and if there's a section that we don't have to replace, that money can be spent on other areas.
That's why I'm, I'm saying, to me, it's more feasible to put it on the south side because I think there's sections that don't need any help other than maybe right on the corner.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Does any have a council discussion?
I'm ready for the ordinance.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-4. An ordinance approving and accepting a Transportation Alternatives Program TAP agreement for the Katy Depot, Liberty Park, Connect Sodalia Project with the Missouri Department of Transportation.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2023-4. An ordinance approving and accepting a Transportation Alternatives Program TAP agreement for the Katy Depot, Liberty Park, Connect Sodalia Project with the Missouri Department of Transportation.
Final passage.
Roll call, please.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Chairwoman Foster, do you have anything? Move on to the appointments. Call for the reading of the appointments.
We have two new appointments. The members of the City Council, Mayor Andrew Dawson. Zoning Board of Adjustments, Mike Privet, completing Kevin Wade's term expiring June 2026, and Chris Paswell's alternate member expiring June 2026.
May I should approve? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of liquor licenses.
We have one renewal tonight. Heather R. Trotter doing business at Walgreens, number 7428, at 801 South Limit for packaged liquor and Sunday sale.
May I should approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Do we have any miscellaneous items from City Council or City Ministry?
Yes, I'd like to, first of all, thank you all for setting through all of these strategic plans from all the departments. I know that it's a, it's a, it's a great commitment of your time, but I, I think they're, they're very worthwhile. And really looking forward to our strategic planning Saturday. Just to give you a little bit of a preview, we'll start about 8 o'clock serving breakfast, but then the presentations will start about 8:30. And typically, we will get done about 2 o'clock, usually a little before that, but if you plan on 2 o'clock, I think we'll be safe. All of the department heads will be there. It's, that meeting is designed to, you know, basically give you a brief review of the presentations that each one of them has given, and basically what their strategic plan is going forward. But then to, for you guys to ask questions, to discuss with them, to explore different possibilities, other things that you'd like for us to look at as far as staff and those kinds of things, because this needs to be your all's plan, your all's direction for what you want to see staff accomplish. And then that really becomes the basis for us to build the budget around, to bring back to you for how we fund all of the things that you want to see us do. It is also open to the public. We had a public meeting that we invited the public, unfortunately, we got no input from that, but, you know, any of your constituents that want to provide something, you know, don't hesitate to bring it to us and discuss and explore at that meeting, and go through it. Again, appreciate your all's dedication of time, and I know it's, I know it's a huge feat.
Would you mind emailing the presentations to me?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm just, some of them may be a little big to email, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I think you were able to do that for us last year, and it helps me a great deal.
Sure, sure. Yeah, good stuff.
Kelly, if you, so if we, as constituents that want to be here Saturday, can you give me some idea about timing, at the beginning of the meeting, at the end of the meeting, or how are we going to handle that?
You mean for them to speak?
Uh huh.
That'd be up to the mayor, but we tried to do the public meeting for them to speak earlier, so this meeting would be your, so, I mean, if you want to ask somebody.
I misunderstood then what you just said because I, I thought you were soliciting public comment for this upcoming meeting at some point during the meeting.
Yeah, not during the meeting, no. We did, what was it, last meeting?
But we can still utilize a comment period regular council meeting, too, or sometime during, okay.
And we will also have another public meeting that we will, right before the budget passage, that we will ask for public input.
And I can bring their concerns to this meeting on Saturday anyway.
Any other items from the council? I will go ahead and open it up to the gallery, our Good and Welfare. If there's anybody that'd like to say anything, you've got some stuff to the microphone. You've got three minutes. Say your name and your address, please.
Renee Vance, 19813 Tanglenook. As a board member of the senior center, I want to thank almost every one of you who've come across our wonderful facility at the Parks Department. As the newspaper pointed out last week, a wonderful facility, and we are definitely making a dent in our senior home band. We are capped at 240 in Pettis County. And that's a lot of folks that we are delivering minutes to. And as you've gone to the grocery store, I know you have seen that the prices have gone up. Unfortunately, as a 501, we're going to have to make some adjustments as well because we cannot let these folks down. I want to ask you guys or help get some feelers out because we're looking for corporate sponsors, just like everybody else. It is a very daunting task when you're feeding that many people and keeping It is a very daunting task when you're feeding that many people and keeping the roof over our heads. We do have a couple of upcoming fundraisers. The Tenderloin Dinner will be next month on the 17th. It's a Thursday evening. And we're going to have our very first gala on the 23rd of March. We're looking forward to that and hopefully we'll raise a good portion of our money. But your continued support is greatly appreciated. And just an FYI, we're not Denny's. There's, there's, we have got those folks that we have to feed, but we've only got one kitchen. So the selections are kind of limited. And we would appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I will entertain a motion to move to closed doors.
Motion, motion to move to closed door sessions, illegal advice, real estate and negotiated contracts.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.